Madam Clerk, if you would, please call the roll.
Mr. Beard.
Present.
Mr. Blevins, Mr. Blues, Ms. Crosby, Mr. DeCamp, Mr. Ellinger, Ms. Gordon.
Here.
Mr. Gray, Ms. Henson.
Here.
Ms. James, Mr. Lane.
Here.
Mr. McCord.
Here.
Mr. Myers.
Here.
Dr. Stevens.
Present.
And Mr. Stenett, thank you.
We have a quorum, so we're ready to proceed. It's my pleasure to welcome to the podium Chaplain Dawson from the Fire Department to give our invocation this evening.
Before I do that, I want to give an explanation. I don't want to appear to be out of uniform or disrespectful coming in a tee-shirt. This is a very special week for the Fire Department. We have a week of giving this week, and this is part of our uniform for the week, to wear this shirt. And it's in honor and memory of those who died September 11th, all those who have served since, the families who've sacrificed. And all this week, we've been going above and beyond the call of duty, giving to our community. And we've given over 200 pints of blood this week, and we're going to be able to make a donation to the University of Kentucky Children's Hospital through a run that we put on Saturday morning that our fire chief led backwards. There's a story behind that. It wasn't his fault, but we're going to harass him over it anyway. But anyways, it's an honor to serve in this community. Let's pray together. Father, we come to you, and we thank you, Lord, for this wonderful day that you've given us and got the opportunity to live in your creation. And we thank you for the, just the simple things, the refreshing rain that we got today, and help us to always be mindful of things that we seem to take for granted so many times. But we come tonight, and on this special day, we just want to remember all the families who were affected the most on this day seven years ago. And we just lift them up to you and just ask for extra strength and grace for them as they relive that day, and as they remember their loved ones, and as they hurt continually. Lord, for all those that have served since, all our soldiers and families who have sacrificed and given so much, we want to remember them and thank you for them and their service and their commitment. Just thank you for what they all represent, the great country that we live in. Although we come to you also tonight specifically, just asking that your presence be in this place. God, that these leaders of ours who give and sacrifice themselves, God, that you'll just give them wisdom and patience and servant attitude to be able to be the very best that they can be, to do the very best for this community that we live in. And God, we thank you for the citizens and others that are here for different reasons, for speaking up and being a part of their community. So, God, we just pray that you be here in every way tonight, and this be a meeting that benefits us all. We pray all this in your holy and powerful name. Amen.
Thank you very much, Chaplain Dawson. I'll turn the podium over to Councilmember Gordon now.
We have kind of an exciting situation here. It's a first for Lexington. It's the first time that Lexington has been, or will be, the book isn't out yet, recognized in the Guinness Book of World Records. And it was accomplished by a wonderful group of young folks, some of who are here before you. And they really did it not just to play the longest volleyball game in the world, but to serve the community. And I'd like to invite Kayla Powell up to stand with me while I read the commemoration. Kayla was the organizer of the world's longest volleyball game. And it happened about a year ago, August, if I recall. Was it August?
End of July.
End of July. And I was one of the public witnesses. To get in the Guinness Book of World Records, you have to have witnesses who certify that they did do what they said they did. And so, we brought them here tonight to congratulate them, and Kayla's going to tell you what, just briefly, what they did for the community and show a brief clip of their work. These are, I believe, high school and college young people. Yes?
At the time, they were.
At the time. Okay. "World's Longest Volleyball Game Commemoration." Whereas, as an intern with the Lexington First Assembly of God, Kayla Powell organized a 55-hour volleyball game that set a new world's record, as established by the Guinness Book of World Records, for the longest volleyball game. And whereas, the church's children and media pastor, Jeremy White, suggested the project to Ms. Powell and supervised her work. And whereas, Ms. Powell's months of work on this project, including completing paperwork for Guinness, coordinating 250 volunteers, and recruiting players, was recognized with the Girl Scout Gold Award, which is the equivalent of the Eagle Scout Award for Boy Scouts, on June 1st, 2008. And whereas, the game also raised a total of $2,300 and collected five carloads of food items that were donated to the Hope Center and the Lighthouse Homeless Shelters. And whereas, the game began at 12:30 PM, Monday, July 30th, 2007, and concluded at 7:30 PM, Wednesday, August 1st, 2007. And, now, this is very cool. Eight thousand 730 points were scored. And whereas, the players were Micah Buckle, Josiah Durham, Mark Workman, Audra Buckle, John Turner, Brooke Preston, Tyler Overly, Molly Dietrich, Jeremy White, Kendra White, Kara Loffenberger, Jessica Abner, Isaac Tandy, Mark Loffenberger, Brian Troyer, Becky McGuire, Andrew McCowen, Liz White, and Jeff Boyko. And whereas, in January 2008, church members were officially notified by Guinness of their world record status with an official game time of 55 hours and 3 minutes. Therefore, Jim Newberry, Mayor of the Lexington Fayette Urban County Government, commends the organizers and participants in the world's longest volleyball game. And this is signed the 11th day of September 2008 by Jim Newberry, our mayor, who is also going to help deliver these commemorations into your hands. So, Kayla, congratulations.
Thank you.
This one's for you. As I read the names, the mayor will, if you'll come up and accept your commemoration. And if you want to get a copy of the book, it's not quite out yet, I understand. So, it'll be out very soon. Micah Buckle, Josiah Durham, Mark Workman, Audra Buckle, John Turner, Brooke Preston, Tyler Overly, Molly Dietrich, Jeremy White, Kendra White, Kara Loffenberger, Jessica Abner, Isaac Tandy, Mark Loffenberger, Brian Troyer, Becky McGuire, Andrew McCowen, Liz White, and Jeff Boyko. So, these kids can play volleyball. So, let's have a round of applause, and then Kayla. Shall we do that now? Do we have a photographer in the house? We could do a group picture quickly. Okay, all right. And then, we'll see a quick video clip of the world record game.
On Monday, we introduced you to Lexington.
Well, good evening. Good evening. First of all, I would just like to say what an honor it is for all of us to be here, and thank you so much for this. This means a lot to us. And it is absolutely impossible for me to talk about this attempt without just giving glory to God for how incredible he was throughout this. And as you mentioned, there were over 200 volunteers necessary for this event. And not only, like, do we have to find 200 people willing to give up at least, you know, four hours of their time, we couldn't know about 40 of them. So, they couldn't know any of us. So, it's really hard, you know, to get somebody to come volunteer when you know them. It's really a challenge when you don't know them. And then also, the way, just by the nature of Guinness World Records, you have to have these people there. There was, we had to have a medical person and witnesses, and if for any reason you don't have a person covering a certain shift at any time, the whole thing's over right then. And we had a couple no-shows at times, and God was so good to us just to bring in people when we needed them. It's incredible. And the other thing is, this team was incredible. I wish you guys could have seen them. About five hours of sleep apiece for 55 hours, like, working hard. And it was not just volleyball, it was competitive volleyball. Like, it looked good, and they were playing to win. And I was so proud of them. And I don't know, it's just incredible for us, too, to have been able to affect the community in such a way. We raised about $5,000 worth of donations for two ministries, two homeless ministries, the Lighthouse and the Hope Center, who are both just incredible, incredible ministries who are changing lives every day. So, it's such an honor for us to get to work with them and just increase publicity, and it was an incredible, incredible experience. The other thing, I would just like to thank the community. Like we said, we needed 200 volunteers, and they came. And we needed people to come watch the game and bring donations, and they were there. And just to support the team, it was, it meant so much to have the people just there cheering them on. So, there were so, so many people. And I'm getting a lot of the credit for this, but there were so many people that helped me organize this event. And, I mean, the hours that went into this game were unbelievable. I know I spent 420, and my family put in an insane amount of hours. I know Jeremy White and his family put in an insane amount of hours. So, there were a lot, a lot of people that should be getting the credit for this, and I'm just very honored. So, thank you very much.
All right. Thank you all very much for joining us this evening. It's a pleasure to have you. You're welcome to stay if you'd like, or if you need to move on, we certainly understand. So, have a good evening. I have discussed with the clerk, and it seems as though our public hearing might most appropriately come after the second reading of the ordinances. So, Madam Clerk, if you will proceed with that, we'll conduct the public hearing as soon as you complete that task.
Ordinance number one, an ordinance levying ad valorem taxes for municipal purposes for the fiscal year July 1, 2008, through June 30, 2009, on the assessed value of all taxable property within the taxing jurisdictions of the Lexington Fayette Urban County Government. All taxes on $100 of assessed valuation as of the January 1, 2008, assessment date as follows. General Services Districts, 0.0800 on real property, including real property of public service companies; 0.0990 on personal property, including personal property of public service companies, non-commercial aircraft and non-commercial watercraft; 0.1500 on insurance capital; 0.0150 on tobacco and storage; and 0.0450 on agricultural products and storage. Full urban or partial urban services districts based on urban services available on real property, including real property of public service companies; 0.1590 for refuse collection; 0.0210 for streetlights; 0.0094 for street cleaning; 0.0920 on insurance capital; 0.0150 on tobacco and storage; 0.0450 on agricultural products and storage; and levying an ad valorem tax for municipal purposes at the rate of 0.0880 on each $100 of assessed value on all motor vehicles and watercraft within the taxing jurisdiction of the Lexington Fayette Urban County Government as of the January 1, 2009, assessment date. Number two, an ordinance levying ad valorem taxes for purposes of support of the Soil and Water Conservation District for the fiscal year July 1, 2008, through June 30, 2009, on the assessed value of all taxable real property within the taxing jurisdictions of the Lexington Fayette Urban County Government, including real property of public service companies, at a rate of 0.0004 on each $100 of assessed valuation as of the January 1, 2008, assessment date. Number three, an ordinance pursuant to a request received from the Lexington Fayette County Health Department levying ad valorem tax for purposes of support of the Lexington Fayette County Health Department for the fiscal year July 1, 2008, through June 30, 2009, on the assessed value of all taxable real and personal property within the taxing jurisdiction of the Lexington Fayette Urban County Government, including real and personal property of public service companies, non-commercial aircraft and non-commercial watercraft, and inventory and transit, and excluding insurance capital, tobacco and storage, and agricultural products and storage, at the rate of 0.028 on each $100 of assessed value as of the January 1, 2008, assessment date; and levying an ad valorem tax for purposes of support of the Lexington Fayette County Health Department at the rate of 0.028 on each $100 of assessed value on all motor vehicles and watercraft within the taxing jurisdiction of the Lexington Fayette Urban County Government as of the January 1, 2009, assessment date. And number four, an ordinance levying an ad valorem tax for purposes of support of the Agricultural Extension Office for the fiscal year July 1, 2008, through June 30, 2009, on the assessed value of all taxable real and personal property within the taxing jurisdiction of the Lexington Fayette Urban County Government. All taxes on each $100 of assessed valuation as of the January 1, 2008, assessment date as follows. 0.0031 on all taxable real property, including real property of public service companies; 0.0034 on taxable personal property, including personal property of public service companies, non-commercial aircraft and non-commercial watercraft, and excluding inventory and transit, insurance capital, tobacco and storage, and agricultural products and storage, levying an ad valorem tax for purposes of support of the Agricultural Extension Office at the rate of 0.0032 on each $100 of assessed value on all motor vehicles and watercraft within the taxing jurisdiction of the Lexington Fayette Urban County Government as of the January 1, 2009, assessment date.
We'll now move to the public hearing, and if you'll bear with me just a moment, I will read a little script here. House Bill 44, the 1979 Special Legislative Session, requires the Urban County Government to provide an opportunity for citizens to make comments about the ad valorem tax rates for the upcoming fiscal year if the proposed rates exceed the compensating rates. The compensating rate is a rate that produces approximately the same amount of revenue that produced, as that produced in the preceding year, excluding new property and personal property. A summary of last year's rates, the compensating rates, and the proposed rates for FY 2009, along with the corresponding assessments and revenues for the General Services District, the Full and Partial Urban Services District, the Fayette County Extension Service, and the Fayette County Health Department, was published in the Lexington Herald Leader on August 30, 2008, and September 4, 2008. Copies of the summary are on the table in the back of this room. A public hearing is now in session in accordance with those requirements. Does anyone wish to address the council on this matter? Any comments from the public? Any comments from the council members? Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you, Mayor. It did occur to me that we regularly get an accounting from Lextran, and we regularly get an accounting from the Lexington Public Library. And we have on this tax docket the Soil and Water Conservation District, the Fayette County Health Department, and the Agricultural Extension Office. And I think it would be appropriate for council members to see an accounting of how those tax dollars are used. Those are taxes that the council has put into place over the years. And so, I just thought I would bring that to the forefront, and if we need a vote on that, I can bring it on Tuesday. But I just wanted to say that in public. It would be good for us to see how those tax dollars are being used.
Any further comment from the council? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing, and a motion to approve those ordinances would be in order.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilmember Blues, and a second by Councilmember Ellinger to approve those rates. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. Those in favor, please indicate by voting aye electronically. Those opposed, vote nay. And Madam Clerk, if you could both reset the machine and call the roll, that would be great. Thank you.
Mr. Beard.
Aye.
Mr. Blevins.
Aye.
Mr. Blues. Ms. Crosby. Mr. DeCamp. Mr. Ellinger. Ms. Gordon.
Aye.
Mr. Gray.
Yes.
Ms. Henson.
Yes.
Ms. James. Mr. Lane.
Yes.
Mr. McCord.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Dr. Stevens.
Aye.
And Mr. Stenett.
Thank you very much. Those ordinances are approved. The next item on the agenda is item five. The ordinance is entitled to first reading. Madam Clerk.
Ordinance number five, an ordinance accepting the bid of Herrick Company Incorporated on the amount of $248,500 for chlorination equipment, replacement for the town branch wastewater treatment plant, and appropriating funds pursuant to schedule number 51. Number six, an ordinance accepting the bid of Aero Electric Company Incorporated on the amount of $710,170 for traffic signal rebuild signalization for a portion of Nicholasville Road for the Division of Traffic Engineering, and appropriating funds pursuant to schedule number 53. Number seven, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute and submit a grant application to the Kentucky Environmental and Public Protection Cabinet to provide any additional information requested in connection with this grant application, and to accept this grant if the application is approved. Which grant funds are in the amount of $144,556 Commonwealth of Kentucky Funds are for the continuation of the litter control program, the acceptance of which does not obligate the Urban County Government for the expenditure of funds, appropriating funds pursuant to schedule number 42, and authorizing the mayor to transfer unencumbered funds within the grant budget. Number eight, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to accept a grant from the Kentucky Justice and Public Safety Cabinet, which grant funds are in the amount of $60,000 federal funds, are for the operation of a ticketing aggressive cars and trucks grant program, and the acceptance of which obligates the Urban County Government for the expenditure of $15,000 as a local match, appropriating funds pursuant to schedule number 44, and authorizing the mayor to transfer unencumbered funds within the grant budget. Number nine, an ordinance submitting ordinance number 261-2007, which authorized and directed the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a reimbursement agreement with C. Brothers LLC and Helen Meyer Properties LLC for developer reimbursement for construction of a sanitary sewer trunk line to increase the cost of constru, for construction from $447,780.30 to $553,092.30, and appropriating funds pursuant to schedule number 43. Number 10.
Madam Clerk, let me interrupt for just a moment. I think Dr. Stevens has a motion to bring with regard to item 10.
Thank you, Mayor. Since this item was introduced several weeks ago and placed on the docket for tonight for first reading, it has raised a good deal of consternation in our community. I have received many communications and information, some true and some false, many arguments, and even pleas. One citizen has sent me 21 pages of information in four different, on four different days in five different communications. And because of this, and because I think it may be premature to consider this without further consideration in our usual committee system, and for, to elucidate the facts and information that relate to this particular change, I would move that it be removed, removed from the docket for consideration at this time, and referred to the Services Committee and to the Town and Gown Commission for further consideration.
Have a motion by Councilmember Stevens, a second by Councilmember DeCamp, to remove item 10 from the docket and to refer it to the Services Committee and the Town and Gown Commission. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll, Councilmember James.
I just wanted to say thank you.
If there's no further discussion, we'll proceed to vote. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Madam Clerk. Let me, let me also say, there were several people who had indicated a desire to speak on this particular topic. In light of that decision, it will not be considered tonight. If you wish to speak, now would probably be an appropriate time to do so, but if you wish to talk to the Services Committee or the Town Gown Commission, we can hear your comments at that time as well. Okay. Then let's proceed. Madam Clerk.
Ordinance number 11, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to accept a grant from the Kentucky Department of Juvenile Justice, which grant funds are in the amount of $44,619. Commonwealth of Kentucky Funds are for support of juvenile delinquency prevention programming, the acceptance of which does not obligate the Urban County Government for the expenditure of funds, and further authorizing and directing the mayor to execute an agreement with Cronin &amp; Clark Incorporated for the truancy reduction initiative at a cost not to exceed $44,619 appropriating funds pursuant to schedule number 52, and authorizing the mayor to transfer unencumbered funds within the grant budget. Number 12, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute supplemental agreement number two with and to accept a grant from the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet, which grant funds are in the amount of $770,000 federal funds, are for the utilities phase of the Clay's Mill Road Improvement Project, the acceptance of which obligates the Urban County Government for the expenditure of $192,500 as a local match, appropriating funds pursuant to schedule number 49, and authorizing the mayor to transfer unencumbered funds within the grant budget. Number 13, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute supplemental agreement number five with and to accept a grant from the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet, which grant funds are in the amount of $255,486 federal funds, are for the design, $11,486; right-of-way acquisition, $152,000; and utilities, $92,000. Phases of the Richmond Road Multi-Use Path Project, the acceptance of which obligates the Urban County Government for the expenditure of $194,472, including for the construction phase as a local match, appropriating funds pursuant to schedule number 48, excuse me, and authorizing the mayor to transfer unencumbered funds within the grant budget. Number 14, an ordinance submitting certain of the budgets of the Lexington Fayette Urban County Government to reflect current requirements for municipal expenditures and appropriating and re-appropriating funds, schedule number 40.
Thank you very much.
Mayor.
I believe, Ms. James.
Yes. Councilmember James.
The clerk has yielded to me for just a moment to make sure that the administration is prepared to deal, to talk about, or share with us the U-DAG information towards the end of the meeting.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Ordinance number 15, an ordinance authorizing payment in the amount of $1,408,100 to Kinselman Klein-Gossman LLC pursuant to the agreement authorized by resolution number 579, 2007, for the design of sidewalks and streetscape, improvements for the downtown area, and appropriating funds pursuant to schedule number 47. Number 16, an ordinance submitting section 21-52 of the code ordinances abolishing one position of staff assistant grade 107N and creating one position of landfill inspector grade 108N in the Division of Waste Management and Appropriating Funds. funds pursuant to Schedule Number Forty-Five. Number Seventeen, an ordinance amending Section Twenty-One dash five subsection two of the Code of Ordinances, abolishing one position of telecommunicator senior grade one thirteen N and creating one position of administrative specialist principal grade one fourteen E in the Division of Emergency Management nine-one-one, and appropriating funds pursuant to Schedule Number Forty-Six. Number Eighteen, an ordinance amending Section Eight of Ordinance Number One-eighty-three, two thousand and eight, to correct the authorized strength for the positions of engineering technician grade one eleven N, skilled trades worker senior grade one twelve N, and public service worker grade one oh six N, and amending Section Ten of Ordinance Number One-eighty-three, two thousand and eight, to correct a division line number, and amending Section Twelve of Ordinance Number One-eighty-three, two thousand and eight, transferring the incumbents for certain positions for the Division of Fire and Emergency Services to the Division of Facilities and Fleet Management retroactive to July eighth, two thousand and eight, and Number Nineteen, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to accept donations totaling $475 from Mr. and Mrs. C.B. Lovell III, Dr. Robert H. Fedding, Mr. and Mrs. E.T. Dellender, Mr. Richard E. Vemont, Dr. and Mrs. Rayner Mullins, Dr. Mary T. Unra, Ms. Janet D. Ellinger, and Ms. Edna Naylor in memory of Ms. Hilda Acton to be used exclusively for improvements to Acton Park and appropriating funds pursuant to Schedule Number Fifty.
Thank you very much. If there are no motions with regard to those ordinances, we'll proceed to the resolutions entitled to second reading. Madam Clerk?
Resolution Number One, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an agreement with the Fayette County Commonwealth Attorney's Office for a fast-track prosecutor for the street sales enforcement project at a cost not to exceed $49,331. Number Two, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an agreement with Fayette County Board of Education for use of Bryan Station High School auditorium at a cost not to exceed $159.75. Number Three, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a software license agreement with New World Systems Corporation for software licensing of fifty mobile data computers at a cost not to exceed $91,500. Number Four, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a lease agreement with Thoroughbred Hospitality LLC for lease of a cart barn at a cost not to exceed $30,000 with future yearly payments subject to sufficient funds being appropriated in future fiscal years by the Urban County Council. Number Five, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute agreements with Georgetown Street Neighborhood Association Incorporated, $1,350, Lexington Art League Incorporated, $1,200, NAMI Lexington Kentucky Incorporated, $850, Central Kentucky Hospital Foundation Incorporated, $1,900, Lexington Humane Society, $250, Highlands Neighborhood Association Incorporated, $400, and Russell Cave Church of Christ Incorporated, $600 for the office of the Urban County Council at a cost not to exceed the sums stated. Number Six, a resolution pursuant to Code of Ordinances, Section Eighteen dash sixty-six, designating the speed limit on Old Vine Street as twenty-five miles per hour, and authorizing and directing the Division of Traffic Engineering to install proper and appropriate signs in accordance with the designation. And Number Seven, a resolution amending Section Two of Resolution Number Two-Ninety-four dash two thousand and eight relating to the Neighborhood Development Fund Program to change the amount of the allocation to Independence Place Incorporated from $600 to $500.
That completes the reading of the ordinances entitled to second reading. Is there a motion to be approved?
Move approval.
Have a motion by Councilmember Gordon and a second by Councilmember Myers that those resolutions be approved. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. Those in favor, please vote aye electronically. Those opposed, please vote no. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Beard?
Aye.
Mr. Blevins?
Aye.
Mr. Blues? Ms. Crosby? Mr. DeCamp? Mr. Ellinger? Ms. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Ms. Henson?
Yes.
Ms. James? Mr. Lane?
Yes.
Mr. McCord?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes. Dr. Stevens? Aye.
Mr. Stenit?
Thank you. Those resolutions are approved. It takes us now to the resolutions entitled to first reading. Madam Clerk?
Resolution Number Eight, a resolution accepting the bid of Watermark Construction LLC on the amount of $185,502.70 for the town branch trail phase two construction for the Division of Engineering. Number Nine, a resolution accepting the bid of Visual Image Systems, establishing a price contract for reflective vehicle decals for the Division of Police. Number Ten, a resolution accepting the bids of ORR Safety Corporation Bluegrass Fire Equipment and Bluegrass Uniforms Incorporated, establishing price contracts for wildland firefighting equipment for the Division of Fire and Emergency Services. Number Eleven, a resolution accepting the bid of Logan Security Incorporated, establishing a price contract for Gainesway Community Center Security for the Department of General Services. Number Twelve, a resolution accepting the bids of Environmental Resources Incorporated, Superior Demolition Incorporated, and Solid Rock Construction Services, establishing price contracts for the demolition of residential structures for the Division of Engineering. Number Thirteen, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute and submit a grant application to the Environmental Protection Agency and to provide any additional information requested in connection with this grant application, which grant funds are in the amount of $220,000 federal funds and are for the Empowering Lexington to Use Power Wisely Project. Number Fourteen, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an agreement with Marriott Griffin Gate Resort and Spa for the Crime Analyst Symposium at a cost not to exceed $2,263. Number Fifteen, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an agreement with U.S. Geological Survey for the continuing and ongoing maintenance and operation of existing stream flow and precipitation gauges at a cost not to exceed $86,910. Number Sixteen, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an agreement with MASH Services of the Bluegrass Incorporated for operation of the MASH drop-in facility at a cost not to exceed $173,458 in grant funds for the, from the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services. Number Seventeen, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an engineering services agreement with Stan Tech Consulting Services Incorporated for the sanitary sewer assessment for Group One Sewer Sheds field activity required by the consent decree at a cost not to exceed $5,297,896.10. Number Eighteen, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a standard software maintenance agreement with New World Systems Corporation for software maintenance support at a cost not to exceed $240,369. Number Nineteen, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute agreements with William Wells Neighborhood Association Incorporated, $150, American Cancer Society Incorporated, $50, Mothers of the Earth United Incorporated, $205, Owl Foundation Incorporated, $125, Martin Luther King Neighborhood Association Incorporated, $250, and American Lung Association of Kentucky Incorporated, $700 for the office of the Urban County Council at a cost not to exceed the sums stated. Twenty, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute change order number one to the Contract Restraint Associates Incorporated for the Solid Waste Expansion Project, increasing the contract price by the sum of $44,504 from $408,600 to $453,104. Number Twenty-One, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a certificate of consideration and accepted deed conveying a permanent sanitary sewer and temporary construction easements from DDD and WLLC for the property located at forty-six fifteen Nicholasville Road for the South Elkhorn Forest Main Project, and authorizing payment in the amount of $13,500 plus usual and appropriate closing costs. Number Twenty-Two, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a certificate of consideration and accepted deed conveying permanent sanitary sewer and temporary construction easements from Cassidy Limited Partnership Two for property located at fifty-one seventy Harrisburg Road for the South Elkhorn Forest Main Project, and authorizing payment in the amount of $12,000 plus usual and appropriate closing costs. Twenty-three, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a certificate of consideration and accepted deed conveying permanent sanitary sewer and temporary construction easements from Jeanette Germain, Christopher Germain, and Logan Germain for property located at two-seven-two-five Brandon Road for the South Elkhorn Forest Main Project, and authorizing payment in the amount of $10,900 plus usual and appropriate closing costs. Number Twenty-four, a resolution ratifying the probationary civil service appointments of David Windling, Equipment Operator Senior, grade one oh nine N, twelve-point-eight-four-one hourly in the Division of Water Quality effective September fifteenth, two thousand and eight; Darrell Baker, Equipment Operator Senior, grade one oh nine N, eighteen-point-six-six-four hourly in the Division of Waste Management effective September fifteenth, two thousand and eight; Theresa Sanders, Equipment Operator Senior, grade one oh nine N, thirteen-point-seven-seven-four hourly in the Division of Waste Management effective September fifteenth, two thousand and eight; Winford Lewis, Equipment Operator Senior, grade one oh nine N, eighteen-point-six-six-four hourly in the Division of Waste Management effective September one, two thousand and eight; Jill Wilson, Recreation Specialist Senior, grade one thirteen E, one thousand six fifty-five sixty-eight biweekly in the Division of Parks and Recreation effective September fifteenth, two thousand and eight; Jacqueline Phelps, Administrative Specialist Senior, grade one twelve N, sixteen-point-one-two-oh hourly in the Department of Environmental Quality effective September fifteenth, two thousand and eight; ratifying the permanent civil service appointments of Robert Pogue, GIS Specialist, grade one fourteen N in the Division of Computer Services effective April one, two thousand and eight; ratifying the probationary sworn appointments of Jeremy Whitley, Fire Lieutenant, grade three fifteen N, sixteen-point-two-six-one hourly in the Division of Fire and Emergency Services effective September one, two thousand and eight; Kenneth Ragland, Fire Captain, grade three sixteen N, twenty-one-point-four-nine-seven hourly in the Division of Fire and Emergency Services effective September one, two thousand and eight; Sean Brown, Fire Major, grade three eighteen E, three thousand three eighty-one thirty-eight biweekly in the Division of Fire and Emergency Services effective September one, two thousand and eight; probationary community corrections appointments Stanley Anderson, Calvin Bennett, Jessica Bradley, David Bryan, Amy Burt Bunton, Cornet, Kimberly Campbell, Christopher Cantor, Henry Cottles, Stephanie Dos, Robert Dunn, Paula Gaines, John Girardi, Trent Gross, James Harmon, Alfred Harris, Adam Hires, Michelle Hunt, Daniel Keeling, Kevin Lawson, Jesse Little, Scott McCracken, Daniel Pedego, Heather Ray, Anne Schultz, Rochelle Walker, Community Corrections Officer, grade one ten N, thirteen-point-nine-thirty hourly in the Division of Community Corrections effective September two, two thousand and eight; permanent community corrections appointments of Paul O'Gio, Community Corrections Officer, grade one ten N, in the Division of Community Corrections effective August twentieth, two thousand and eight; Wendy Amber, Matthew Crawford, Jason Durham, Tanya Fairchild, William Green, Darrell Maggard, LaVoitus Meadows, Sean Norman, Randolph Parker, Michael Rowe, Melody Shropshire, Michael Weller, Todd Young, Community Corrections Officer, grade one ten N, in the Division of Community Corrections effective September third, two thousand and eight; approving leave of absence for Lori Vanover Seager, Probation Officer, Juvenile, grade one twelve N, in the Division of Youth Services, request a twenty-day council approval leave without pay from September fourth, two thousand and eight, through September third, twenty-third, two thousand and eight; Bonnie Miracle, Social Services Supervisor, grade one fifteen E, in the Division of Youth Services, request a sixty-day council approval leave without pay from August twenty-two, two thousand and eight through August twentieth, October twentieth, two thousand and eight; Shalonda Holliday, Administrative Specialist, grade one ten N, in the Division of Police, request a ninety-day council approval leave without pay from August one, two thousand and eight to October twenty-nine, two thousand and eight; approving unclassified civil service appointment of Ricky Caldwell, Administrative Officer, grade one eighteen E, two thousand and eight thirty-nine forty-four biweekly in the Department of General Services effective September eight, two thousand and eight; Marie D., Staff Assistant Senior, grade one oh eight N, eleven-point-two-five-two hourly in the Division of Water Quality effective September twenty, September one, two thousand and eight. Twenty-five, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a purchase of service agreement with Simon &amp; Company Incorporated for services related to federal matters and funding as provided, as further provided in the two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine work plan at a cost not to exceed $39,000. Twenty-six, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a purchase of service agreement with Blue &amp; Company LLC for a comprehensive financial audit for the Division of Family Services Healthcare Clinic at the Family Care Center at a cost not to exceed $47,500. Twenty-seven, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a mental health services agreement with Bluegrass Regional Mental Health Mental Retardation Board Incorporated for court-ordered mental health evaluations of clients referred to the Division of Youth Services at a cost not to exceed $2,500. Twenty-eight, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an affiliation agreement with University of Kentucky for its UK healthcare programs for paramedic clinical training at no cost to the Urban County Government. Twenty-nine, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a revised group sales agreement with Hyatt Regency Lexington for the Bluegrass Invitational Wheelchair Basketball Tournament at no cost to the Urban County Government. Number Thirty, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a renewed agreement with affiliate, of affiliation with Bluegrass Crime Stoppers Incorporated for services and assistance at no cost to the Urban County Government. Number Thirty-One, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an engineering services agreement with Carman for design services for construction of water quality improvements at McConnell Springs at a cost not to exceed $76,800. Thirty-two, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an engineering and demolition services agreement with Judy Construction Company for repair of Clarifier Number Eight at the West Hickman Creek Wastewater Treatment Plant at a cost not to exceed $156,917. Number Thirty-Three, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an agreement with WS Farish and the Carnegie Literacy Center Incorporated and the Board of Trustees of Lexington Public Library for funding of the Carnegie Center at a cost not to exceed $36,000. Thirty-four, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an agreement with the Open Gates Neighborhood Association, six, $750 for the office of the Urban County Council at a cost not to exceed the sums stated. Number Thirty-Five, a resolution approving a form lease for lease of horses from the Friends of the Lexington Mounted Police Incorporated, and authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute such leases with the Friends of the Lexington Mounted Police Incorporated on an as-needed, on an as-needed basis. Thirty-six, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a lease agreement with Employment Solutions Incorporated for East Sector Roll Call Facility beginning July one, two thousand and eight for a term of five years, subject to sufficient funds being appropriated in subsequent fiscal years at a cost not to exceed $2,812 per month. Number Thirty-Seven, a resolution authorizing and directing the Division of Traffic Engineering pursuant to Code of Ordinances, Section Eighteen dash eighty-six, to install multi-way stop controls at Star Shoot Parkway and Pink Pigeon Parkway. Number Thirty-Eight, a resolution approving the report of an audit, of the audit examination of the Lexington Fayette Urban County Government Sheriff's Settlement, two thousand and seven taxes for taxes collected as of the April twenty-fourth, two thousand and eight, and granting the sheriff acquiatus.
Madam Clerk, I'd like to interrupt for just a moment so that Councilmember Myers has a motion to understand.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to amend Resolution Thirty-Nine to include October fourteenth at six o'clock PM for the scheduled public hearing. So moved.
Have a motion, second, amend Item Thirty-Nine by adding October fourteenth, two thousand and eight at six PM as the time for the public hearing. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor, please vote aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries.
Mayor, who seconded that, please?
Councilmember Stenit. And also understand there are some individuals who wish to speak to this particular issue. If there's no objection, now might be an appropriate time for them to do so. I do not have a list, but if you are interested in speaking on Item Thirty-Nine, if you would, please step to the podium and give us your name and address, and you'll have three minutes.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, my name is Jamie Millard. I'm president and CEO of the Lexington History Museum. We're located at two-fifteen West Main Street in what we refer to as the new Lexington History Center. I'm not going to take too much of your time tonight because you've heard my statements and sentiments before, but I just want to remind every council member that this is a process, and nothing in this resolution says that we do or do not do anything without at least allowing the public input to the process that took place over the summer with the delegation, as well as to look at the individual projects that have been looked, been included on the list, and to develop an understanding of their relative merit and importance to our community. This morning, the United States Congress held hearings about the importance of museums and libraries to quality of life, to strong families, and to the quality of the overall community. And a point that was made was that whereas libraries typically are free and open to the public, museums would love to be but can't because of economic factors and need to charge admission. Our museum is one of the very few museums in the country that does not charge admission. And we get by, at the good grace of this government, to have the space inside the building as far as maintenance, utilities, and so forth, but we still require public support, and that support is growing in a declining economy. Our contributions and numbers of donors are up substantially over a year ago, same period. So we know we're viable to this community. We know we're providing a service to this community. We want an opportunity to be heard by this council how important our mission and our programs are to families, to children, to grandparents, to visitors. We help explain what makes this place so unique to the world. So let the process move forward. Let's discuss the projects on their own merits. How they get paid for may be saved for another day, but I urge you to have the hearing and to let's understand what these projects are and the importance to the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Millard. Mr. Dalton?
Thank you, Mayor. Robert Dalton, five-twenty Douglas Avenue. I was here tonight because I was under, understanding, at least from the paper, that they'd be talking about the center points, you know, with the TIF, and my remarks are basically geared toward... towards that. This isn't just about the proposed center point, T.I.F., but also about credibility, and that's the credibility of this city and those who govern, namely the mayor and the city council. Majority of council members approve of Lexington applying for T.I.F. in regard to the center point project, but I do not believe that center point meets the criteria for T.I.F. funding. My understanding of K.R.S., Chapter sixty-five point seven-zero-seven-one, says that an outside consultant or financial advisor will analyze data related to the project and make a determination to include that, quote, "The project will not occur if not for the designation of the development area, the granting of incremental revenues by the taxing district or districts other than the Commonwealth, and the granting of the state tax increment revenues," unquote. Additionally, the law reads in K.R.S. sixty-five point seven-zero-seven-seven, Paragraph Two, quote, "State participants under this program shall be limited to the support of approved public infrastructure costs and costs associated with land preparation, demolition, and clearance determined to be necessary to support private investment or private development projects that benefit the public where project economics are unable, unable to support or secure necessary financing to undertake the public improvements, land preparation, demolition, and clearance," unquote. I believe that web companies have already stated that they can do the project, whether it the city, so under this case, T.I.F. does not qualify. I believe if this council moves forward and supports this action, which I don't think it qualifies under, then as representatives of the city, I believe you will lose credibility with the Commonwealth. Perhaps I, the next time you submit a request for aid from the Commonwealth, they're going to scrutinize it because you've already shown that you will apply for any type of financial aid regardless of whether the project qualifies or not. We are a major metropolitan center in Kentucky, and we need to use better judgment. Lastly, I personally disagree with how center point is laid out now. Three-hundred-dollar-a-night rooms, high-end retail shopping. I think beyond the World Equestrian Games in two years, how much business are they really going to get out of it? I know that I can't afford to go there. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Marr, I understand you wish to speak, and Ms. Bayer, is that correct? You wish to yield three minutes to Ms. Marr, so you'll have six minutes, Ms. Marr.
Thank you, Eric Patrick Marr, forty-one sixty-five Hartwood Road, and I came with prepared remarks tonight, see if I can do better. Regarding the Never Say Die Center Point and contiguous T.I.F. District discussions, I hope these might be my final comments. Albert Camus, the French author, philosopher, and Nobel Prize winner, may have said it best, "Greatness consists in trying to be great. There is no other way." Per that, I don't believe our issue here is T.I.F. or no T.I.F. Of course, everyone wants any and all extra revenue and to keep our revenues here within our city. Councilman DeCamp said it best in one of the very first T.I.F. delegation, delegation meetings, when he basically said, "We'd be fools not to capture all the revenue we can." Yet on Tuesday, he voted against this particular T.I.F. District. Councilman Myers then asked, "How can that be?" Now that is an intriguing question. In fact, of the seven delegation members on Tuesday, four of them voted against this particular T.I.F. Project. If you also count Councilwoman James and Gordon, who also attended the meetings frequently, six out of nine meeting attendees voted against it. If you also count Councilman Blevins, who also attended at least one of the meetings, seven, the seven against votes all came from people who were involved in the process on the inside. That is quite telling, and its meaning is plainly obvious. Something is wrong somewhere. It is because this issue is not T.I.F. or no T.I.F., center point or no center point, like this argument keeps focusing on. Focusing on either yes or no misses a true conversation everyone wishes we would have. The issue is how can Lexington be great? The issue is does center point really make Lexington the very best it can be as an entire city, people, culture, economy, and otherwise? Fundamentally, we're talking about building an entire city the right way, not just any old way. Again, the question is how. So my beloved Lexingtonians, the voting is not for T.I.F. or against T.I.F., T.I.F. The voting is for the greatest Lexington possible or for more of the same. It is government's job and government's ordained responsibility to build our city to be the very best it can be for the people. What we are really talking about here is not building this city block or this small T.I.F. District, relatively small, but building an entire city for its overall greatness for lifetimes to come. Voicing disapproval for center point and/or the corresponding T.I.F. District is not voting against Lexington's great development and evolution. That would be silly. It is voting against this particular process that is ultimately creating more mediocrity in our Lexington that has always kept people like me and my peers who've all left and Councilman McCord's beautiful young daughter from competing globally. Voicing disapproval is not rejecting tax revenues. It is rejecting this arguably inadequate usage of our space and tax dollars. The mediocrity and seemingly self-interest that has shaped Lexington's landscape for all of my life and assumably before then, assumably before then. If you have an empty city block in the heart of our city, it is your job as government to build that block, that district, and our entire city to be the absolute very best it can be so that we can all benefit, all gain, all compete globally in this global economy. That is your job, if nothing else, to build our city to be the greatest it can be, serving all of our people. Voting against this is simply saying this particular process, this particular development, this particular project is not the best we can do, and therefore, we must go back to the drawing board and stay there until we get it right. In two thousand and fifty to two thousand and ten, Equestrian Games will only be in history books, but what stands in this downtown in the long run will matter, and it will matter a lot. By allowing this project to continue, you are saying that this is the very best we can do, or you are saying that you are powerless to do any better. You are saying that you, as a government, are powerless towards self-interest, that, quote-unquote, "is a free country and people can do what they want to do with their property", as one councilman stated on Tuesday. Yet we toy, toy with minuscule laws, telling homeowners that they cannot use their profit property for temporary parking spaces for U.K. football games. Sort of changing the rules in the middle of the game of their home ownership, as Newberry's email once said. Furthermore, Councilman McCord accurately pointed out, "We now have the historical opportunity to redraw downtown and our city. I would only ask that we try to be great, as I know he and all of us desire." Continuing Mayor Newberry's emails to the public and to people said, "I do not consider it to be a perfect development, but on balance, there has never been any doubt in my mind that the best interests of Lexington are served by the completion of center point." So a flawed development, development is best for Lexington, and you never had any doubts? It is forever in everyone's best interest? When Lexingtonians by the thousands are saying otherwise, no doubt at all, I find that a little baffling. So then the question becomes, if the current center point project and corresponding T.I.F. District is not the very best, very greatest idea for Lexington's true long-term success, then what might be an example of what is, so we can compare apples to apples? Well, as it turns out, we just so happen to have an example of true greatness right in front of our eyes in a very similar project and cost, even larger geographically, the downtown distillery district, needing even more money for better roads, utilities, sewers, and buildings, and is quite clearly one of the greatest ideas to ever be born in our city. The Burberry Museum's truly affordable mixed uses, tourist magnetism, and green trails and riverbanks is obviously a demonstration of true greatness, of, at the very least, trying to be great. I know if I visited my friend Jessica's original hometown of Athens, Ohio, I would not be terribly impressed with the tall hotel downtown, but she had a really cool Mecca of culture I would remember and tell my friends about it. With all that said, I know the web companies have the slogan of developing tomorrow's landmarks. I wish that this process was trying to be great, to truly make Lexington a landmark in historical landscape of the globe, where people all over the universe think of Lexington as great. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Marr. Is there anyone else who wishes to address this issue? All right, Madam Clerk?
Resolution thirty-nine as amended. A resolution directing the preparation of a development plan for the Phoenix Park Courthouse Development Area, which includes all recommendations of the delegation established pursuant to Resolution Number Four Thirty-Four, two thousand and eight, and scheduling a public hearing thereon on October fourteenth, two thousand and eight, at six P.M. Number forty, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor, directing the Vice Mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to appoint a task force to assist in determining the location, siting, and design of a new facilities to house the current downtown operations of the Urban County Government, including the preparation of any requests for proposals to perform such work. Number forty-one, a resolution changing the street name and property addresses numbers of thirty-six eighty-five, thirty-six eighty-seven, thirty-six eighty-nine, thirty-six ninety-one, thirty-six ninety-three, thirty-six ninety-five, and thirty-six ninety-seven, River Park Drive, two suites, one nineteen, one twenty, one twenty-one, one twenty-two, one twenty-three, one twenty-four, and one twenty-five, Trent Boulevard, nine ninety-one, Todd's Road, two-nine-nineteen, McClanahan Lane, fourteen twenty, Todd's Road, to twenty-eight eighty-five, Rio Dosa Drive, twenty-nine forty, Todd's Road, to twenty-seven hundred, Palumbo Drive, thirty-sixty-one, Todd's Road, to six-twenty-six, Caden Lane, thirty-one oh five, Todd's Road, to twenty-nine eighty-five, Liberty Road, thirty-one oh nine, Todd's Road, to thirty, twenty-nine ninety-seven, Liberty Road, thirty-two eighty, Todd's Road, to two-oh-three, Forest Hill Drive, six forty-four, Forest Hill Drive, to six sixty-four, Golf Town Circle, twenty-five hundred, Flying Ebony Drive, to twenty-seven eighty-nine, Liberty Road, twenty-eight oh one, Richmond Road, to two-hundred, Old Todd's Road, and six thirty-nine, Dodge Street, to one-seventy-nine, Payne Street. Changing the property address numbers of twelve seventy-three, twelve seventy-five, twelve seventy-seven, twelve seventy-nine, twelve eighty-one, twelve eighty-three, twelve eighty-five, twelve eighty-seven, twelve eighty-nine, twelve ninety-one, twelve ninety-three, twelve ninety-five, twelve ninety-seven, twelve ninety-nine, thirteen oh one, thirteen oh three, thirteen oh five, thirteen oh seven, thirteen oh nine, thirteen eleven, thirteen thirteen, and thirteen fifteen, Trent Boulevard, to thirteen twenty-five, Trent Boulevard, Suites, one oh three, one oh two, one oh one, one oh four, one oh five, one oh six, one oh seven, one oh eight, one oh nine, one-ten, one-eleven, one-twelve, one-thirteen, one-fourteen, one-fifteen, one-sixteen, one-seventeen, one-eighteen, one-twenty-eight, one-twenty-seven, and one-twenty-six, and twenty-eight ninety-one, Richmond Road, Unit A, two-twenty-eight eighty-seven, Richmond Road, and changing the street name of twenty-eight thirty-eight, twenty-eight fifty-two, twenty-nine twenty-two, twenty-nine twenty-six, twenty-nine thirty, twenty-nine thirty-three, twenty-nine thirty-five, twenty-nine thirty-seven, twenty-nine thirty-nine, twenty-nine forty-one, twenty-nine forty-three, twenty-nine forty-five, twenty-nine forty-seven, twenty-nine forty-nine, twenty-nine fifty, twenty-nine fifty-one, twenty-nine fifty-three, twenty-nine fifty-five, twenty-nine fifty-seven, twenty-nine fifty-nine, twenty-nine sixty-three, twenty-nine sixty-eight, twenty-nine eighty-one, and twenty-nine eighty-six, Liberty Road, two, twenty-eight thirty-eight, twenty-eight fifty-two, twenty-nine twenty-two, twenty-nine twenty-six, twenty-nine thirty, twenty-nine thirty-three, twenty-nine thirty-five, twenty-nine thirty-seven, twenty-nine thirty-nine, twenty-nine forty-one, twenty-nine forty-three, twenty-nine forty-five, twenty-nine forty-seven, twenty-nine forty-nine, twenty-nine fifty, twenty-nine fifty-one, twenty-nine fifty-three, twenty-nine fifty-five, twenty-nine fifty-seven, twenty-nine fifty-nine, twenty-nine sixty-three, twenty-nine sixty-eight, twenty-nine eighty-one, and twenty-nine eighty-six, Caden Town Road, and one-fifty, one-sixty-two, one-sixty-two, Suites, one-ten, one-fifty, one-twenty, two-forty, two-sixty, and two-eighty, one-sixty-three, two-oh-nine, Suites, eleven oh one, eleven oh two, twenty-one oh one, twenty-one oh two, twenty-one oh three, twenty-one oh four, twenty-one oh five, twenty-one oh six, twenty-one oh seven, twenty-one oh eight, twenty-one oh nine, thirty-one oh one, thirty-one oh two, thirty-one oh four, thirty-one oh five, thirty-one oh six, forty-one oh one, forty-one oh three, forty-one oh four, forty-one oh five, forty-one oh six, forty-one oh seven, forty-one oh eight, forty-one oh nine, forty-one ten, forty-one eleven, forty-one twelve, four, five, one oh one, fifty-one oh two, fifty-one oh three, sixty-one oh one, sixty-one oh two, sixty-one oh three, sixty-one oh four, sixty-one oh five, sixty-one oh six, seventy-one oh one, seventy-one oh two, seventy-one oh three, seventy-one oh four, and seventy-one oh five. Six oh one, nine oh one, nine twenty, thirteen forty-five, sixteen twenty, sixteen fifty, twenty-seven hundred, thirty-eleven, thirty-seventeen, thirty-thirty-one, thirty-fourty-one, thirty-fourty-five, thirty-fifty-one, thirty-fifty-five, thirty-sixty-five, thirty-sixty-nine, thirty-seventy-three, thirty-seventy-seven, thirty-eighty, thirty-eighty-one, thirty-ninety, thirty-ninety-four, thirty-ninety-seven, thirty-ninety-eight, thirty-one hundred, and thirty-one, thirty, thirty-one-ten, Todd's Road, two, one-fifty, one-sixty-two, one-sixty-two, Suites, one-ten, one-fifty-two, twenty-two, forty-two, sixty, and two-eighty, one-sixty-three, two-oh-nine, Suites, eleven oh one, eleven oh two, twenty-one oh one, twenty-one oh two, twenty-one oh three, twenty-one oh four, twenty-one oh five, twenty-one oh six, twenty-one oh seven, twenty-one oh eight, twenty-one oh nine, thirty-one oh one, thirty-one oh two, thirty-one oh four, thirty-one oh five, thirty-one oh six, forty-one oh one, forty-one oh three, forty-one oh four, forty-one oh five, forty-one oh six, forty-one oh seven, forty-one oh eight, forty-one oh nine, four-ten, forty-one-ten, forty-one eleven, forty-one twelve, fifty-one oh one, fifty-one oh two, fifty-one oh three, sixty-one oh one, sixty-one oh two, sixty-one oh three, sixty-one oh four, sixty-one oh five, sixty-one oh six, seventy-one oh one, seventy-one oh two, seventy-one oh three, seventy-one oh four, and seventy-one oh five. Six oh one, nine oh one, nine twenty, thirteen forty-five, sixteen twenty, sixteen fifty, twenty-seven hundred, thirty-eleven, thirty-seventeen, thirty-thirty-one, thirty-fourty-one, thirty-fourty-five, thirty-fifty-one, thirty-fifty-five, thirty-sixty-five, thirty-sixty-nine, thirty-seventy-three, thirty-seventy-seven, thirty-eighty, thirty-eighty-one, thirty-ninety, thirty-ninety-four, thirty-ninety-seven, thirty-ninety-eight, thirty-one hundred, and thirty-one-ten, Old Todd's Road, all effective thirty days from passage. Forty-two, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a special warning deed conveying a certain tract or parcel of land known as the Julia R.U.N. Elementary School property to the Board of Education, effect County, Kentucky, in consideration of the payment in full of school building revenue bonds issued by the Urban County Government for the construction of improvements to said property. Number forty-three, a resolution specifying the intention of the Urban County Council to expand and extend Partial Urban Services District Number Three to provide garbage and refuse collection, finding a need for this service in the area included, and finding the ability of the Urban County Government to provide these services in this area, which areas defined as certain properties on the following streets. Sharkey Property Unit Two-C, Section One, Townley Park, Lexingtonian Estates, Section Two, Winter Circle. Sharkey Par, Property Unit Two-C, Section Two, Town Square Park, Lockmere Estates, Maple Ridge, Unit One-A, Lockmere Plou, Lockmere Place, Hegbee Mills Reserve, Reserve Road, Lexingtonian Estates, Section One, Versailles Road, Winter Circle, Richmond Woods, Todd's Road, Newtown Springs, Unit One, Lot Nine, Russell Springs Drive, Newtown Springs Drive, Hamburg Place Farm, B-six-P area, War Admiral Way. And number forty-four, a resolution specifying the intention of the Urban County Council to expand and extend the Full Urban Service District to provide street lighting, street cleaning, and garbage and refuse collection, finding a need for these services in the area included, finding the ability of the Urban County Government to provide these services in this area, which areas defined as certain properties on the following streets. Johnson Property Unit One-I, Burgess Avenue, Millbank Road, McCullough Drive, Johnson Property Unit One-H, Millbank Road, McCullough Drive, Ramsey Sullivan Property Unit Two-A, Sullivan's Trace, Cherry Blossom Way, Blackford Property, Phase Three, Unit One-D, Blackford Parkway, Masterson Hills, Unit One-A, Ira Tibbs Trail, Chesapeake Equine, Greendale Road, Ritt Station, Subdivision, Lakewood Avenue, Milliken Property, Shady Hills, Tree Lion Way, Clark Property, Unit One-L, Ice House Way, Sharkey Property, Unit Three, Section One, Town Center Drive, Town Square Park, Guest Property, Unit Five-C, Section One, Honeycomb Trail, Guest Property, Unit Four-H, Section One, Jewett Creek Drive, Tuscany, Unit Four-C, Summerfield Battery Street, Blackford Property, Phase Three, Unit One-C, Blackford Parkway, Dyer Cove, Flint Cove, Clark Property, Unit One-H, Ice House Way, Clark Property, Unit One-I, Orchard Grass Road, Clark Property, Unit One-Jade, Tollgate Road, Orchard Grass Road, Ramsey Sullivan Property, Unit Three, Lot Three, Section Two, Kitten Joy Circle, Meadow Sweet Lane, Kearney Ridge Boulevard, Tuscany, Unit Four-B, Summerfield Patchen Wilkes Drive, Sandhurst Cove, Johnson Property, Unit One-M, Bill, Millbank Road, Ever, Elverton Road, Johnson Property, Unit One-N, Section One, Elverton Court, Elverton Road, Myers Property, Unit One-C, Field Rush Road, Myers Property, Unit One-B, Field Rush Road, Caladun, Cal, Calandula Road, Crocus Court, Myers Property, Unit One-A, Calandula Road, Field Rush Road, Service Berry Drive, Tuscany, Unit Four-A, Summerfield with Patchen Wilkes Drive, Clark Property, Unit One-F, Polo Club Boulevard, Pokeberry Park, Old Howls Head Lane, Fortune Business Center, Unit One, Lot Eleven, Beasley Street, Clark Property, Unit One-G, Polo Club Boulevard, Ice House Way, Johnson Property, Unit One-L, Section One, Millbank Road.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That concludes the resolutions entitled to first reading. Are there any motions? Councilmember Blevins?
Thank you, Mayor. We have a, a need for a second reading on Number Seventeen. I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules for a second reading of Number Seventeen for the purposes of getting this contract underway for the consent decree implementation.
Second? Thank you. We have a second by Councilmember Stevens. Councilmember Blues?
Mayor, I'd like to add Number Thirty-One, Number Thirty-Two, and Number Thirty-Five at the request of the administration.
I'm sorry, could you repeat those?
Yes, Thirty-One, Thirty-Two, Thirty-Five. I'd be glad to provide further details on request.
Thank you. Councilmember Gordon?
Thank you, Mayor. I request second reading on Number Twenty-Six so that this audit can go ahead and proceed.
Second. Councilmember State, Stenit?
Thank you, Mayor. I request Number Thirty-Seven, so we can get the Star Shoot Parkway traffic calming installed. And then also, I hate to do this, Susan, but Number Forty-One, we have a couple of streets without names. We need the Caden Town name to get up there on the street, so it's all part of the Liberty Road opening. And then Number Forty. Thank you, Mayor.
Good news is, we don't have to deal with it next week, right?
That's right.
All right. Councilmember DeCamp?
I'd like to add to that Number Thirty-three so we can get that money to the Carnegie Center as soon as possible.
Any others? Then I'll entertain all of that as a motion to suspend the rules for purposes of giving second reading to the following items: seventeen, twenty-six, thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-five, thirty-seven, forty, forty-one. Were there any others?
601, 901, 920, 1345, 1620, 1650, 2700, 3111, 3117, 3031, 3041, 3045, 3051, 3055, 3065, 3069, 3073, 3077, 380, 381, 3890, 3897, 3100, and 3110 Todd's Road all effective 30 days from passage. 42. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a special warranty deed conveying a certain tract or parcel of land known as the Julia R. UN Elementary School property to the Board of Education of Fett, County, Kentucky, in consideration of the payment in full of school building revenue bonds issued by the Urban County Government for the construction of improvements to said property. Number 43. A resolution specifying the intention of the Urban County Council to expand and extend partial urban services district number three to provide garbage and refuse collection finding a need for this service in the area included and finding the ability of the Urban County Government to provide these services in this area, which areas defined as certain properties on the following streets. Sharkey Property Unit 2C, Section 1, Townley Park. Lexingtonian Estates, Section 2, Winter Circle. Sharkey Property Unit 2C, Section 2, Town Square Park. Lockmere Estates, Maple Ridge, Unit 1A, Lockmere Place. Hegbee Mills Reserve, Reserve Road. Lexingtonian Estates, Section 1, Versels Road. Winter Circle, Richmond Woods. Todd's Road, Newtown Springs, Unit 1, Lot 9, Russell Springs Drive. Newtown Springs Drive, Hamburg Place Farm, B6P area, War Admiral Way. And number 44. A resolution specifying the intention of the Urban County Council to expand and extend the full urban service district to provide street lighting, street cleaning, and garbage and refuse collection finding a need for these services in the area included finding the ability of the Urban County Government to provide these services in this area, which areas defined as certain properties on the following streets. Johnson Property Unit 1I, Burgess Avenue, Millbank Road, McCullough Drive. Johnson Property Unit 1H, Millbank Road, McCullough Drive. Ramsey Sullivan Property Unit 2A, Sullivan's Trace, Cherry Blossom Way. Blackford Property, Phase 3, Unit 1D, Blackford Parkway. Masterson Hills, Unit 1A, Ira Tibbs Trail, Chesapeake Aquine. Greendale Road, Ritt Station subdivision, Lakewood Avenue. Milliken Property, Shady Hills, Tree Lion Way. Clark Property, Unit 1L, Ice House Way. Sharkey Property, Unit 3, Section 1, Town Center Drive. Town Square Park. Guest Property, Unit 5C, Section 1, Honeycomb Trail. Guest Property, Unit 4H, Section 1. Jewett Creek Drive. Tuscany, Unit 4C. Summerfield Battery Street. Blackford Property, Phase 3, Unit 1C. Blackford Parkway. Dyer Cove. Flint Cove. Clark Property, Unit 1H. Ice House Way. Clark Property, Unit 1I. Orchard Grass Road. Clark Property, Unit 1J. Tollgate Road. Orchard Grass Road. Ramsey Sullivan Property, Unit 3, Lot 3, Section 2. Kitten Joy Circle. Meadow Sweet Lane. Kearney Ridge Boulevard. Tuscany, Unit 4B. Summerfield Patchen Wilkes Drive. Sandhurst Cove. Johnson Property, Unit 1M. Millbank Road. Elverton Road. Johnson Property, Unit 1N. Section 1, Elverton Court. Elverton Road. Myers Property, Unit 1C. Field Rush Road. Myers Property, Unit 1B. Field Rush Road. Calandula Road. Crocus Court. Myers Property, Unit 1A. Calandula Road. Field Rush Road. Service Berry Drive. Tuscany, Unit 4A. Summerfield with Patchen Wilkes Drive. Clark Property, Unit 1F. Polo Club Boulevard. Pokeberry Park. Old Howls Head Lane. Fortune Business Center, Unit 1, Lot 11. Beasley Street. Clark Property, Unit 1G. Polo Club Boulevard. Ice House Way. Johnson Property, Unit 1L. Section 1, Millbank Road.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That concludes the resolutions entitled to first reading. Are there any motions? Councilmember Blavens.
Thank you, Mayor. We have a need for a second reading on number 17. I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules for a second reading of number 17 for the purposes of getting this contract underway for the consent decree implementation.
Second. Thank you. We have a second by Councilmember Stevens. Councilmember Blues.
Mayor, I'd like to add number 31, number 32, and number 35 at the request of the administration.
I'm sorry, could you repeat those?
Yes, 31, 32, 35. I'd be glad to provide further details on request.
Thank you. Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you, Mayor. I request second reading on number 26 so that this audit can go ahead and proceed.
Second. Councilmember Stenit.
Thank you, Mayor. I request number 37 so we can get the Starship Parkway traffic calming installed. And then also, I hate to do this, Susan, but number 41, we have a couple of streets without names. We need the Caden Town name to get up there on the street, so it's all part of the Liberty Road opening. And then number 40. Thank you, Mayor.
Good news is, we don't have to deal with it next week, right?
That's right.
All right. Councilmember DeCamp.
I'd like to add to that number 33 so we can get that money to the Carnegie Center as soon as possible.
Any others? Then I'll entertain all of that as a motion to suspend the rules for purposes of giving second reading to the following items. 17, 26, 31, 32, 33, 35, 37, 40, 41. Were there any others? All right. Any discussion? Those in favor of suspending the rules to give second reading to those items, please indicate by saying aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries. Madam Clerk.
Resolution number 17. I think Councilmember Stenit ought to help me with the beat on that one resolution, so I can... Sorry. Number 17. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an engineering services agreement with Stan Tech Consulting Services Incorporated for sanitary sewer assessment for Group 1 sewer sheds build activity required by the And 150, 162, 162 Suites, 110, 150, 240, 260, and 280. consent decree at a cost not to exceed $5,297,896.10. 163, 209 Suites, 1101, 1102, 2101, 2102, 2103, 2104, 2105, 2106, 2107, 2108, 2109, 3101, 3102, 3104, 3105, 3106, 4101, 4103, 4104, 4105, 4106, 4107, 4108, 4109, 4110, 4111, 4112, 5101, 5102, 5103, 6101, 6102, 6103, 6104, 6105, 6106, 7101, 7102, 7103, 7104, and 7105. Number 26. 601, 901, 920, 1345, 1620, 1650, 2700, 3111, 3117, 3031, 3041, 3045, 3051, 3055, 3065, 3069, 3073, 3077, 380, 381, 3890, 3897, 3100, and 3110 Todd's Road all effective 30 days from the passage. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a purchase of service agreement with Blue &amp; Company LLC for a comprehensive financial audit for the Division of Family Services Healthcare Clinic at a family care center at a cost not to exceed $47,500. Number 31. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an engineering services agreement with Carmen for design services for construction of water quality improvements at McConnell Springs at a cost not to exceed $76,800. 32. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an engineering and demolition services agreement with Judy Construction Company for repair of Clarifier Number 8 at the West Hickman Creek, West Wedder, Trittman Plant at a cost not to exceed $156,917. Number 33. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an agreement with WS Farish for the Carnegie Leadership Center Incorporated
Thank you.
and the Board of Trustees of the Lexington Public Library for funding of the Carnegie
Is there a motion to approve?
Center at a cost not to exceed $36,000.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Beard, second by Councilmember Gordon to approve
35.
those resolutions.
A resolution approving a form lease for lease of horses from the Friends of the Lexington
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote.
Mounted Patrol Incorporated, no, Lexington Mounted Police Incorporated and authorized
Those in favor of those resolutions, please indicate by voting aye electronically. Those opposed, vote nay electronically.
and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute such leases
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
with the Friends of the Lexington Mounted Police Incorporated on an as-needed basis.
Mr. Beard.
Aye.
Mr. Blavens.
Number 37.
Mr. Blavens.
A resolution authorizing and directing the Division of Traffic Engineering pursuant
Thank you. Mr. Blues.
to Code of Ordinance to Section 1886 to install multi-way stop controls at Starship Parkway
Ms. Crosby. Mr. DeCamp. Mr. Ellinger.
and Pink Pigeon Parkway.
Ms. Gordon.
Aye.
Mr. Gray.
Number 40.
Ms. Henson.
A resolution authorizing and directing the Vice Mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government
Yes.
Ms. James.
Aye.
to appoint a task force to assist in determining the locations, siting, and design of the new
Mr. Lane.
Yes.
Mr. McCord.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
facility to house the current downtown operations of the Urban County Government, including
Yes.
Dr. Stevens.
Aye.
And Mr. Stenit.
Thank you. Those resolutions are approved.
the preparation of any requests for proposals to perform such work.
That takes us down to item eight. Communications from the mayor. Is there a motion to approve?
And number 41.
I have a motion by Councilmember Myers, and a second by Councilmember Ellinger.
A resolution changing the street name and property address numbers of 3685, 3687, 3689,
Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to bring to the council's attention number two.
3691, 3693, 3695, and 3697.
And this does not, my comments don't have anything to do with the person who's being
Rearford Park Drive to Suites 119, 120, 121, 122, 123, 124, and 125 Trent Boulevard.
recommended, but in the past, although it's not legally required, the council has chosen
991 Todd's Road to 919 McLanahan Lane. 1420 Todd's Road to 2885 Rio Dusa Drive.
to hold confirmation hearings of Board of Adjustment and Planning Commission members
2940 Todd's Road to 2700 Palumbo Drive. 3061 Todd's Road to 626 Caden Lane.
so that we can inquire about conflicts of interest.
3105 Todd's Road to 2985 Liberty Road.
And I would move that we postpone number two or remove it from the docket until we
3109 Todd's Road to 2997 Liberty Road. 3280 Todd's Road to 203 Forest Hill Drive.
can hold a confirmation hearing.
644 Forest Hill Drive to 664 Goff Town Circle. 2,500 Flying Ebony Drive to 2789 Liberty Road.
I have a motion second to postpone number two until there is a confirmation hearing.
2801 Richmond Road to 200 Old Todd's Road. And 639 Dodge Street to 179 Payne Street.
Is there any further discussion?
Changing the property address numbers of 1273, 1275, 1277, 1279, 1281, 1283, 1285, 1287, 1289, 1291, 1293, 1295, 1297, 1301, 1303, 1305, 1307, 1309, 1311, 1313, and 1315 Trent Boulevard to 1325 Trent Boulevard Suites.
Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. I suppose that is technically a motion to amend the original motion, so we're now ready to vote on the list as now amended unless there's further discussion. Seeing none, those in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. There are a number of communications for information purposes. That now brings us down to item number 10. And that is our UDAG discussion.
103, 102, 101, 104, 105, 106, 107, 108, 109, 110, 111, 112, 113, 114, 115, 116, 117, 118, 128, 127, 126, and 126.
And I know Mr. Kelly is here, and I'll let him lead off.
And 2891 Richmond Road. Unit A to 2887 Richmond Road.
And is Ms. King here? Okay, couldn't see her. And Commissioner Webb may also participate.
Thank you, Mayor, and councilmembers. We're here this evening to participate in a discussion about the UDAG dollars and where that they are being currently spent. And in conjunction with our request that the council authorize us to move forward with utilizing $1.4 million of the remaining UDAG money to begin the design work for the Streetscape project. Ms. King is available to give you a status report on the '06 approved projects, how many dollars have been expended, excuse me, and how many dollars are anticipated to be left from those projects. And then Commissioner Webb is here to respond to any questions you might have about the Streetscape project itself. So with that, if it's agreeable to the council, I would ask Ms. King to give you an update on the projects that are currently underway. We do have, just so you can follow along, an email that was distributed some time ago back in August that has the project names and the dollar amounts for the project and how much at that time was anticipated to be left over.
Let's go ahead.
Okay, I'm sorry. Basically, on the list, this email is a result of some questions that Councilwoman James had requested as far as UDAG balances that were available from the 2006 allocation. At that time, we got $2.1 million. And this was from the project balances that we had left as of August the 20th. We had $100,000 remaining in the Housing Authority account, which was supposed to have been used for overtime in the Bluegrass Asandau area. Of course, they no longer need that money because they do not, there are no units up there, and all the units have been torn down. $250,000 for Third Street, which was to be used for development plan and funds for leveraging projects based on the plan. We are in the process of doing our Third Street planning, so these funds will be used, were anticipated to be used for leveraging since we found other funds to actually do the study. We have available $61,599 from the Caden Town Rosenwall School Project. We spent most of that with transportation enhancement dollars, and we had used some of this money to be able to complete the remaining project where we had run short. Grass Park, which is a renovation of that facility, has expended about $37,000. They have about $37,359 left. They will be using those funds to continue those repairs. We have $186,000 left for ADA improvements, which were supposed to have been for improvements to this building. We did do the design. There's not enough money to do any of the improvements, not to mention the fact that we're going through trying to decide what we're going to do with the building, so those funds are sitting there. Bell House was for exterior painting and refurbishing. We have expended the $90,000. Downtown sidewalk replacements, we have expended $444,550, which was mainly for the plan that you all have. And then Ann Street, which is what we use UDAG funds to do the acquisition relocation and pay for some of the other costs related to those relocation costs for that. We have not expended all of those funds, but we don't want to take the full balance away because we actually just did a draw request to pay the last house that we tore down, which was about $50,000. But we also anticipate some additional costs where they plan on connecting the road to Midland Avenue. And we're not sure of those exact costs. Engineering is working with their consultants as to how they're going to actually be doing that actual design. We don't anticipate it being major costs, but there will be some additional costs, so we don't necessarily want to take that balance down to zero just in case we have some things we need to do. But those are, and the only other funds that you all have allocated, which actually came in this spring, you all allocated $450,000 for Georgetown Street redevelopment. That project has finally gotten the Heritage Council's okay, so we are going to be moving forward with that. So those are the projects that we have allocated out of the UDAG funds. And we still have, at this point in time, $1.7 million available in UDAG funds that have not been budgeted. So if you've got any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer them.
Are there any questions for Ms. King or any others? Mr. Blavens.
Just want to make sure I'm reading this correctly, Paula. Are you saying, there's a line in here that says fund balances not needed for projects till available, 256,000.
That's correct.
That's funds that were originally put into a project that are no longer needed. Is that number included in the 1.7 million, or is that in addition to?
It would be in addition to.
So we have almost two mil, yeah, almost $2 million.
That would be correct.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Lane.
Just a point of clarification, the $186,000 for the ADA elevator and sidewalks, does that now go down into the total available, or is that in addition to that?
You have to add that to that if we, yes. I did not add it because it wasn't my comment to make.
So let me another $170,000 or so.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Henson.
Thank you. I have a question about the $186,000 for the government center. And so that money is there, right? It was allocated to do that project, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And so does it get reallocated?
If we do not use those monies for that project, then any project that has a balance that we know that we're not going to use, we can reallocate, yes, ma'am.
Because I really think that that's important for this building. I think, I don't know the ADA elevator, but I know we certainly need a better entrance into this building.
It cannot just be, it has to be for ADA improvements. You cannot use these funds just for improvements to a government facility.
Well, no, I'm talking about facility for ADA.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Better than, well, it says ADA elevator.
That was the original intent, was to do the elevator at the entrance, actually, because right now we don't really have a, we could have a better way.
I just thought a ramp would be better.
Yeah, we could have a better way.
I just thought a ramp would be better than an elevator.
It's not my call to make, I'm sorry.
Okay, okay. So I was just wondering, and then if, but also I was thinking with the possibility of getting a new government center, you know? But anyway, that's all.
Councilmember James.
Thank you, Mayor. Paula, do you know with the sidewalks that were indicated here, do you know where those sidewalks were located?
That project has finally gotten the Heritage Council's okay, so we are going to be moving forward with that. So those are the projects that we have allocated out of the UDAG funds. And we still have, at this point in time, $1.7 million available in UDAG funds that have not been budgeted. So if you've got any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer them.
Are there any questions for Ms. King or the others? Mr. Blevins?
Just want to make sure I'm reading this correctly, Paula. Are you saying, there's a line in here that says fund balances not needed for projects till available, $256,000?
That's correct.
That's funds that were originally put into a project that are no longer needed. Is that number included in the $1.7 million, or is that in addition to?
It would be in addition to.
So we have almost $2 million, yeah, almost $2 million?
That would be correct.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Lane?
Just a point of clarification, the $186,000 for the ADA elevator and sidewalks, does that now go down into the total available, or is that in addition to that?
You have to add that to that if we, yes. I did not add it because it wasn't my comment to make.
All right, so let me another $170,000 or so.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Henson?
Thank you. I have a question about the $186,000 for the Government Center. And so that money is there, right? It was allocated to do that project, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And so does it get reallocated?
If we do not use those monies for that project, then any project that has a balance that we know that we're not going to use, we can reallocate, yes, ma'am.
Because I really think that that's important for this building. I think, I don't know the ADA elevator, but I know we certainly need a better entrance into this building.
It cannot just be, it has to be for ADA improvements. You cannot use these funds just for improvements to a government facility.
Well, no, I'm talking about facility for ADA.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Better than, well, it says ADA elevator.
That was the original intent, was to do the elevator at the entrance, actually, because right now, we don't really have a, we could have a better way.
I just thought a ramp would be better.
Yeah, we could have a better way.
I just thought a ramp would be better than an elevator.
It's not my call to make, I'm sorry.
Okay, okay. So I was just wondering, and then if, but also, I was thinking with the possibility of getting a new Government Center, you know. But anyway, that's all.
Councilmember James?
Thank you, Mayor. Paula, do you know with the sidewalks that were indicated here, do you know where those sidewalks were located, under the ADA elevator and sidewalks for Government Center, where exactly?
They would be right out front.
Is that something, and that was for ADA compliance?
Mm-hmm.
Is that something that could be done regardless, I mean, sidewalks need to be accessible as whether the government building is here or not, right?
It's an eligible cause, yes, ma'am.
Could we move forward with that project, the sidewalks?
If you also choose.
Well, I guess that's my question, is how, who's choosing which projects move forward now?
I believe what basically happened with the ADA improvements for this facility is they actually were put on hold because we didn't know what we were going to be doing with this facility. So that's why they just stopped. So if you're saying that you want to proceed forward with some of the sidewalk improvements, I don't know if they've been designed.
Commissioner Cole, I think, wants to speak on that. Thank you.
Yes, actually, we put the elevator project, which included a new entrance, sidewalks, and elevator out for bid. It came back about twice what we had budgeted for the project, so then it was put on hold. So that was done earlier this year, so we put it on hold as we studied what we wanted to do with this building. The likelihood of a new owner of this building wanting to put this particular functional elevator right in the front entrance, which is what we were proposing, is probably not very likely.
And I'm speaking, I'm sorry, I'm not speaking to the elevator. I was speaking to the sidewalks.
Okay, the sidewalk that was part of that project was just to redo the entrance right in front to give handicap accessibility through our front entrance. But we've got the steps as you come in, so it wouldn't, it doesn't make sense to just do the sidewalk right there. It was to lead it into the building.
Are there any sidewalks in downtown Lexington that are not ADA compliant?
I don't know the answer to that.
Okay. Because I'd like to see that those funds used towards the ADA compliant sidewalks.
Okay.
So if we can, you know, pursue that, I would like to see an allocation, maybe that $186,000 and put towards that. And maybe it's included in the downtown streetscape design. I see Mike standing up behind you. Maybe that is, but, you know.
Yeah.
I would support that money going towards ADA compliance of sidewalks.
Okay. I would anticipate that the streetscape, the sidewalks are ADA compliant, but I can't speak to our current sidewalks and the plans.
Okay, thank you. Mike, is the 1.4 million that's being requested for the streetscape, I guess, design, is that what you're requesting for, for the design of the streetscape?
Yes, there's different components of the design. There is a design that will be done for the actual sidewalk and street improvements, but there's also design in there to move aerial utilities underground. That design has to be done also.
Okay.
So both of those components are in there.
And so, and underground's not going to happen at every location where sidewalks will be done?
No. In fact, there are some areas where the utilities are already underground, and you wouldn't have any cost for that type of design in those areas, in those particular projects. If you look from Broadway to Lime on Main Street, there wouldn't be any utility design cost built in to that $1,400,000.
Okay. Is that, is the 1.4 for the entire design of everything?
That's actually the five priority projects that you heard Cleek speak about each time that he came before the Planning Committee, those ones that there was consensus on that need to go first. That's for the design of those. Actually, I have a list if you want me to step back.
I have that, if that's what you're talking about. I was just asking if that was for the complete.
Yes, that includes the design components for all of those.
And within those five priorities, how much have to, how many of those have to do with sidewalks? Just sidewalks alone and making sure we have passable and accessible sidewalks?
Cheapside would include a little bit more than sidewalks because it included Cheapside Park. In addition to the sidewalk on Cheapside, when you look at by name, Main Street, Vine Street, Limestone, all those include sidewalks, including intersections, which we do have a large problem. Our intersections are not all ADA compliant, so it would include that component of making those actual intersections and where the crosswalks are ADA compliant, as well as the sidewalk itself.
Okay. And this question might be for Joe Kelly, is this, or for Paula, actually. Is this our last UDAG payment?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So what we're working with now is about $1.9 million with a, for balance?
And let me clarify, it's our last UDAG payment for Festival Market. We continue to get monthly payments for Victorian Square.
Okay. What happens with those payments when they come in?
Those funds are being allocated as match for the home project.
Okay.
It provides our match for home.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mayor.
Anything further? Seeing nothing, we'll proceed. Are there any further announcements from the council? All right, that takes us down to our last agenda item, which is public comment. And I have, I think, one person who has signed up, Mr. McCarthy. If you'll step to the podium, you'll have three minutes.
Your honor and members of the council, there are several things that strike me as mistakes. Number one, item 37 under resolutions, when you're putting multiway stop controls at an intersection of two four-lane divided streets, I think it would be much more sensible to put a signal at that intersection where Pink Pigeon Cross intersects Star Shoot, because this would be, well, when you get multi-lane roads, it's kind of difficult for everybody to keep straight who got the multiway stop first. For one thing, for another, it takes more, it causes the vehicles to burn more fuel just to put them back in motion after they've stopped. I really would rather we got rid of as many multiway stops around town and put in signals in their place, or perhaps roundabouts in some cases, to conserve fuel. Then also, I think the proposals to replace this building, I shudder at the thought of how much money that's going to cost. I would really rather that this government try to keep this building patched together instead of tearing down other buildings nearby that may actually be in better shape than this one to build the replacement while this one is being used in the meantime. And it bugs me that I've heard proposals for replacing Rupp Arena. As far as I know, that you still haven't paid off all the bonds on the last reconstruction of the Civic Center. I don't think you should be going in debt to build a new replacement when you haven't paid off what's out there. And when it comes to the, well, when it comes to what you're spending money on, if you're really eager to borrow yourselves eyeball deep in debt and spend the money to try to jumpstart the economy, I would suggest instead of spending it on replacing buildings, you put it into other stuff that has to be done, like perhaps speeding up the repair and upgrades of the sewer system.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. Does anyone else wish to address the council? Mr. Cobb, if you'll step to the podium, you'll have three minutes.
Obama, first giving honor to God, thanking him for his mercy and his power, showing me the rain today, the floods, what it was. Thank him for allowing me to come through that I was in a car, and the car started hydroplaning, and the people I was in the car with, they was nervous, but I wasn't even nervous. Thank him for the peace that he gave me. I came here tonight to thank some people. Chuck Ellinger, you got to shine. I appreciate that, man. Appreciate that. I would thank the other councilmembers, got to shine earlier. You know, it's a privilege for me to shine y'all's shoes, because I know how y'all feeling, the precious building, and y'all gonna need y'all shines in the